All right, just to bring you up to speed. Like I said, we're getting a late start. Ethan couldn't be here today, so it's Paul, Scott, Doc, Tracy, myself, and you. That's in attendance this morning. All right. Beth, are you okay to get started?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's go ahead and say a pledge real quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if I'm doing this justice or not, but we'll try it. Well, I wonder.
The water bottle, I think it might be a red bottle.
Yeah.
And that's, yep, that's perfect.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, and I realize that we're short on time, so I'm going to do this as fast as I can. We're usually very fast, but maybe a little bit longer today. First of all, I hand out a leveraging sheet that is in front of you. So maybe you've looked at that. We hand this out every year, but I'm kind of concerned that maybe it hasn't always been very clear to everyone regarding our status or our funding. I want to make sure that you understand, our office is a combination of federal, state, and county government. The amounts shown on that page or calculations that we do every year and present to you, I'm not sure if you realize that looking at that, those are dollars that we put into our office operations and programs, and it's in connection versus the county dollars that you give us. So for every county dollar that you spend at the Solon Water Office, we leverage that money back to Carroll County, thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. For every dollar you give us, we bring back thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. And I just wanted to make sure that we were very clear about that. And that is what we present to you every August, is that we actually leverage taxpayer dollars. Okay? So on to our budget request, if you've got that in front of you. Just want to make sure and know that our budget request is very seldom ever altered year to year, meaning we really don't ask for much more at any time, less our requests for staff dollars. Please note that in no way does that budget ever cover our expenses for you. It's just you don't ask the council to support us for anything more than just partial activities. We do have other funding sources, and that includes money that we generate ourselves. We operate also off of grant dollars that we apply for and receive and manage. We can usually find funds to even add a little bit of salary to our part-time personnel through federal programs. That's a year-to-year thing. It's never a guaranteed amount of money that we can get. But I just want to point out to the council that the one budget item that we totally rely on from you is the administrative assistant budget, is the full-time salary position. So for lack of anything better to call that position, our operations manager or administrator, pretty much if there's a job to do, that position does it. So the bucket stop's right there and is responsible for everything in the office, including financials and state mandated programs and things we have to do. So noting that you don't technically list that position as department head, but it is without direct supervision as in control of office operations on a daily basis. So we also want to note that it is under an elected official. It may not be an elected official that's under general ballot, but it is under three elected officials through special districts of the state of Indiana. So we have to go by state guidelines, and we do have an election. So the position is under an elected official. So with that noted, we've over many years tried to get the salary compensation up to the status of the job that's being provided and expected in this position. Obviously, that's been kind of hard to do for us. We've been told over the years that we can't compare ourselves to other counties and what the other counties' jobs in similar position makes because our tax bases are not as high as theirs. And we've been told lots of different reasons why this is just never going to get funded at a higher level. So with that, just want to make sure that you understand, last year was a pretty hard pill to take. Okay? I've been here thirty-three years, and so this is my thirty-fourth budget hearing. And I realize this is the time to come to the council for budget requests, especially for salary. Period. That's when you do it. But obviously, that has changed, and everybody comes in on a whim and is demanding extra things. We have tried not to do that. So in your March meeting last year, you guys decided to do midstream, giving raises to court staff, to highway departments. And I realize that there were some extenuating circumstances that you felt. And you gave an extremely generous raise for duties that were performed outside of the norm for a missing engineer over a few months that that position wasn't covered. But instead of giving a stipend or something as a merit-based pay, you chose to give an all-round raise per hour to that staff member. Which was very interesting at best. So we're going to take out the comparisons to other counties. We're going to compare ourselves within this county and align the playing field maybe just a little bit. If you want to give raises according to work, grants, supervision, et cetera, then let's go with us. Okay? Since computer records at our office in ninety-six, we've processed a million ninety-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in grants. We have a state grant application that just got submitted yesterday for four hundred thousand dollars. And in the next two weeks, another that's going in for eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We also have two current grants with IDAM. They're not even listed on that leveraging sheet, and that's bringing in five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do equipment rental programs in our office facilitated all through the year. Those programs have netted us two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars that we bring back and use for our programs. It's not necessarily supposed to be a money-baker, more of a service to the landowners, but that money is dedicated, coming back into our budget, to provide for ag day and all those events that we do. So in front of you for the budget, we pose that the administrative assistant salary request, given the raise that the county highway office manager has, we are comparable at forty hours a week. Okay? We're just asking for the same raise that was given last year, and they were already paid at a higher rate than our position to begin with. So we're not asking for a typical county's salary, which is fifty thousand a year, but we're asking for what you are paying, a current position in the county. So we also included the typical five percent raise that everybody asks for each year. So that's what you're looking at. Now, I understand everybody here, and you're going to hear it all day long, feels overworked and underpaid. And I in no way want to compare our office to anybody in emergency services or we're not even infrastructure like the roads. Okay? But I'm going to say this, you usually eat three times a day. You break at lunch at noon. When you do that, you go thank a farmer. That farmer's been in our office and relies on our services throughout the year for everything that they do. So while we may not have a superpower like emergency services, our superpower is that we feed the world. So that's our plan. And Josh, I remember you're listening, I just want to make mention that you did say in March, there is a process, and we handle these things during budget time. So here we are. We're playing by your rules, but we really cry foul for what happened last year. So you set the bar, you set the precedence, and we're really waiting to see how you respond to everybody. So do you have any questions for us?
Roger.
Yes.
Are you referencing a document with all of those numbers you rounded off there about the county grant dollars that you administer?
That's through our office in our accounting systems. We run our own accounting. It does not come through the county budget or through the auditor's office.
But I don't have it in my book. Could I just, does everybody else have it, or did you just?
No. You guys don't have that information. If you'd like to see all our grants, I actually have the one I'm processing today here in front of me, and they're through IDAM. And we do have our own accounting system at the office. So we run that through our books and run that through the state as well. So if you are interested in seeing our grant proposals and what we currently hold, I'd be more than glad to provide those to the council. We're running two IDAM grants currently, one's ending here in fifteen days. We're applying for the one I said, and we're applying for state grants again. To the farmers. We're applying for that in the next week. So those are grants that we hold. If you'd like to see them or see past grants, I'll bring in the totes, the files, the cabinets. You can see everything that you'd like.
Yeah, just an Excel file just showing like all the, not like how much you guys administer annually. That would be great information for the council.
Okay, well, I will be very glad to bombard your email inboxes with all of that. And a kind of a grant from IDAM is all fun reading. So if you'd like to see that.
Okay, I don't think the specific grant, just the totals, I guess. The, like, this grant name, amount.
Okay, just small. I can do that very easily.
Is it on this?
Some of it is on that leveraging worksheet, but since we have not actually spent the five hundred and fifty yet and it's all allocated, that is not accommodated for on that sheet. So that actually should have an extra five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Tracy. So what is the total percentage you're actually asking for a raise? It's not five percent.
The actual percent was never calculated because we brought my salary up to what was being paid to that position that you had granted, and then five percent was added. That had listed, that salary was seventeen sixty-three currently, and I'm paid fifteen seventy-eight.
And you can bring that to the highway, right?
To the highway. This position does not even make second deputy salary.
What was that number again?
From what I had listed, and Beth, correct me if I am wrong, is I thought that with the dollar raise that you gave, seventeen sixty-three and now it was what that was paid. Yes.
Right, so you don't have a twelve percentage of it.
Not from.
So you're asking for five percent raise on top of going up to the highway.
Right, because that, I mean, and I realize that is a generic traditional, what everybody asks. So we're just asking bumped up to the level that is paid for that forty-hour, what we position.
So you're asking for, okay.
And then five percent.
On top of that.
Yeah, or whatever raises you choose or do not choose to give this year.
Okay, so let's get this straight. You're wanting to bump up the wage to what the highway person makes, and then you also want five percent on top of that.
Right, because what it looks like is I'm asking in that salary position for a lot more than everybody else percent-wise. We're just asking you to get it up to that playing field and then whatever raises or you do or do not choose to give for. Right?
We're just trying to catch her up where she should be, in our opinion as a board, because it's nothing to not even be, you know, partially start with the grant. She'll find another grant out there, submit the grant, get the grant, and I mean, she can do multiple grants at a time that she doesn't really have to do. I mean, she can sit on her butt and not do it. And I mean, she's bringing a lot more money into the county, and she's not forgetting compensated for it. And I mean, at this age, you can go, no, she gets a couple dollars less. It's kind of sad. You're not really appreciating the employees you got.
So you worked forty hours a week, worked forty hours a week. And that was good.
Seventeen cents.
I think that's part of the reasons that they gave you in the past. I remember I, that and the extension office, this forty hours and certain percentages or something. But she also is saying that when you gave the administrative a dollar amount, she was still less. She's, you know, she's still less than what she's made. She was a dollar less. Yeah, it just.
And there's a reason why I'm stating it that way. Because you're asking for to bump her up automatically to what the highway person makes, and then you're asking for additional five percent. And there's a reason I'm asking that.
Because it does look like a large amount. It's just, we felt it's just plain ketchup. So.
All right, thank you.
Now, with the, all the grant money, I presume that money, all of that money is spent?
The money that we get goes for cost share to landowners. We have a contract worker that helps process, helps to process some of the paperwork and funding and helps us to coordinate. So we also have an employee that we manage there as well, that's out of Indianapolis. It goes for outreach programs, materials, equipment. I mean, it's not all being spent on the land, but it is a good portion of that that it is. So the one that we're asking for from the state is completely cost share. It will be completely two hundred thousand that goes back into, into cost share for the landowners. So we have spent, our last grant we got that's three years through IDAM, we spent two hundred and twenty thousand dollars allocated and not spent, allocated it out in three months. There is a huge need for it. We keep trying to bring it back to the landowners. It is a huge amount of paperwork and processing. So we're doing the best we can to serve Carroll County, and farmers have a great need, and that's who we're there to serve.
And these are all off general leverage. Does that, did that be a correct assumption?
They're all off, they're off my general leverage. They do not reflect at all in the county because we run our own set of accounting. Yes.
Just on this thirty-eight thousand five, does that include five percent or?
Yes, that includes five percent. I'm sorry if I misunderstood. Yeah, the thirty-eight five oh one is the total amount.
Total amount.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you. My pleasure to be here. I think this is my ninth one. It feels like we do it every five minutes.
Which one are you presenting first so we can get to the next report?
I don't know. Probably Circuit Court.
Sure.
Maybe Joint Courts. Judge Hawkins is going to be the one that answers most of your substantive questions. I'm more for stirring the pot, making people angry, making unclearly. I hear it all the time, people, oh, we can make more money at McDonald's. Go work at McDonald's. It's not as easy as you think. If you think it's so easy, go work at McDonald's. I don't understand how we can shut down the globe for two years and people are buying half-million-dollar homes in the community and everybody's making more money. I don't understand how that works, so that's why I'm bad at these budget things. I've always just spent less money than what I make, and that's how my budgets always work. But everybody wants to talk about everyone else's jobs. I try not to talk about the other offices because I don't know what the other offices do. So then when you speak about someone that you don't know what they do, sometimes you sound ghoulish. And as far as if there's any innuendo about the courts coming in here midstream, I believe I spoke to you every year about future tenants, never pressing, just guys, we should address this. And then eventually, we had on perceived circumstances where some people transitioned out, and we had an opportunity to make our court system more efficient for the county, and we tried to jump at that opportunity, and the council assisted us. So we appreciate that. And I would not have asked for any more money this year from you if we could, but you know how, you just heard. Everybody says, guy, come ask for the same thing. Guy, ask for the same thing. We're all the same. I think you should treat everybody differently. I think every office should pay their staff differently. But that's why you are you, and I am me, and we are different, and you, I would not want to do your job. And for the people that say you're doing a bad job, run for that position, that position, that position, and do a better job. But if that's your opinion as a community member, I'm tired of people sniping at me because the amount of complaints I've received in nine years directly to me are about zero. So when people tell me what other people are saying, complaining about me, I say, until they tell me to my place directly, I don't have an issue. So if they have an issue, bring it to me. People will bring you their issues today. Frankly, I think you're doing a great job. Judge Hawkins, like I said, can answer substantive questions because he's the adult and has dealt with budgets in the past and knows more about finances. But I'm happy to answer any questions that may be unclear. I don't think our budget changes much now as opposed to what we discussed last year in the mid-session, so.
After that, I'll rest. No, so if you want to start with the Circuit Court one, that's fine. We've got all of them listed individually. Like he said, we have really, really, really combined forces with the two courts unprecedentedly, I think, the way they work together. And frankly, I can tell you, being short two full-time people.
Again.
Again, the way we reworked it with the chief court reporter and the court administrator has really saved Superior Court. I mean, there's no question about that. So we see that working now, and once we get to full staff, I think we'll be in a better shape and as efficient as we can probably be be for the long-term future, I think.
And interjecting, if people aren't aware, we lost a member tragically. So we've dealt with that loss as part of our operations, and we had a very seasoned member retire, which we graduated her for her years of service and wished her well. But that is two more positions that we had recently filled, I think, three positions, correct, or four. We were very short of staff. We filled some positions, and then we lost two more people shortly thereafter. And so those positions are advertised and will be interviewing for those two positions soon at the rates that were previously determined.
And it's been, the folks that we have, we're all, four of the five that we have are less than ninety days. One ninety day employee, so it's, it's fun upstairs. So, but we're, they're doing well.
We still are getting, we still are getting work done with that amount of new staff. It is, every day, we're just learning and doing the best we can to keep the operation moving forward in the community. But I think financially, we, a few years ago, y'all increased the public defender budget, and I think that logistically has helped for everybody because there was always, I think, money, but it's just from different sources and reimbursements and then some additionals. And so I think this is more helpful for y'all to plan, and we try to be mindful of that. That's our, pretty much our largest expenditure. And we've heard from our prosecutor's office his opinion about that, but I don't know. We can create more revenue streams as a county, I suppose, but that's not y'all's job. That's along the commissioner's. So until we get a bigger pie as a county, we're just getting smaller pieces of our smaller pie, so.
So on the Circuit Court page, there are very little changes as from last year. I mean, we moved the chief court reporter. That person is now in Joint Court under that budget. The others, the deputy court reporter, the bailiff, the two employees there, everything else I think is almost identical.
What's the percentage that you're asking for?
I do not have that calculated, I'm sorry. I can tell you it comes out to, for deputy court reporter, we've asked for twenty dollars, and now they're making seventeen oh four, seventeen fifty-four.
I would imagine we asked for five percent. We've probably tried to be consistent with other offices, but it's. So it's.
And the bailiff is what?
So the amount that is requested takes that pay to eighteen dollars. That's sixteen, currently sixteen sixty-six. Deputy court reporters across the board in all three counties were asking for twenty dollars, which are now seventeen, I believe, seventeen fifty-four. And then the chief court reporter were asking for twenty-two dollars an hour, which right now is nineteen ninety-nine, I think. So.
And I can't speak for Judge Hawkins, but frankly, historically, under different counsel, if you did not request raises, you wouldn't be given raises even if raises were given to every other office. And so since we've just got raises, we're not expecting raises or not really requesting raises, but we don't want to not get raises if you all give everybody else raises. So part of that process that probably could be better in the future, but it is what it is now.
Any questions from the Circuit Court Chief?
Can you repeat what you wanted to do?
Okay, hang on.
I saw a couple lines here that increase office supplies level. But your spend through this year is only four hundred dollars, but you're asking for two thousand dollars next year. Is there something specific there?
The, I know, I'd have to ask Karen about that. Usually what we're, this is the second time I've done this, it feels like twenty. But typically, we buy the majority of the supplies and stuff at the end of the year, at least in Superior Court we have, so it looks like the spend is low. But by the end of the year, when we replenish things, it's usually easier. We put in one large order or two large orders instead of, you know, every, every three weeks we've ordered highlighters or paper or something like that. So I think that's the reason there.
Also, to piggyback on that, Mr. Plou, the, historically, I think it had been budgeted at a higher amount. That was reduced, I think, last year, and we replace office computers on a predictable cycle every five years or so. And so that could be the cause. I don't have the specific cause. I do know that we received some infrastructure upgrades through some COVID grants, and so it may not be computers, but if I, I can follow up at round two of those meetings as far as the purpose of those increases because I don't have a specific answer for you, but that's my best guess.
Yeah, there's also a office machines line, which I assume the office machines is the computers. And it's, and I, we anticipated it going up because we cut, we definitely did cut it last year. Because, yeah, replaced, we had replaced all the computers on additional, or I can't remember how we did it, but it was a large expenditure for house-wide, but because of Windows ten, or eleven, or whatever it is.
Yes. Regarding that specific increase, I'm seeing what you're seeing, that I think the increase is requested at two thousand dollars more. I don't have that specific information this morning. I apologize, I can follow up. That seems like it would be tethered to something that's a specific plan.
I would anticipate that.
But yes, I'll try to get that information for you because that does seem like it was purposeful. Or is an accident. It's one of those two, but I don't have that answer for you, unfortunately.
Beth, Ms. Meyer, do you want to talk about that?
Why'd you say the bailiff? I got the court reporter, you didn't want a court reporter, right?
Well, we need that line item, but we'd really like to rename that deputy court reporter because we've got one chief court reporter for both. So that's why you'll see in the Superior Court one.
Right, so that one, then all deputy court reporters would be twenty dollars.
Exactly. That's our request. Either way, we want them to be the same for across both courts, and the Joint Court, and the Joint.
Once again, I can't speak for Judge Hawkins, but having worked with other colleagues in the past and seeing how other counties can function well or not well, Judge Hawkins and I kind of used this opportunity to try to make it a system between the courts that is best for the courts presently, and that will be difficult for judges that don't get along in the future to undo because the structure we've set up is essentially a court administrator that is kind of the umbrella over all the operations, managing the employees and other things at the request of the judges. The judges are essentially kings of their kingdoms in each court, doing their own things. They each have one court reporter that is essentially tethered to that judge, and that judge is pretty much in charge of that employee. And then all of the other deputies, the plan is they go where the work's needed that day and put out the fires that are need to be put out, and we're kind of at the discretion of the court administrator, who works for the judges. And that way, we're hoping that in the future, things can always run smoothly because there are often occasions with two judges in many counties. If they don't agree, then nothing happens because you have an opinion, I have an opinion, and then we're stuck. And so now we've got two judges, we've got a court administrator, and so a lot of the stuff that can be delegated to the court administrator, that person handles, and there's a third vote if you need to, to break some ties. But we're, this, at least in my estimation, is trying to be a long-term solution to make the courts always function efficiently and not allow egos and different elected officials to then make it work less well for them.
Which one would you like to do next?
Superior Court. Utility shit, very last night.
I don't think we're there yet.
We're not there yet. We're going to Joint Courts?
Joint Courts.
Hey, Josh.
Yeah.
Hey, can you check your email? I sent you an invite to Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's up right now, now we just jump over it.
So this Joint Court is. So this joint court is where the other one is.
Correct. So the joint, so in the proposal here this year, the, there's one deputy court reporter in there and then the chief court reporter both in this budget. And you can see there, they're already in the account in midstream last year, but that's the funding. But it's the same across the board, the request. We want them to all be equal. Otherwise, I don't think.
They were pretty much equal, but they wasn't equal. And so that was almost more frustrating because it was just within a few cents. So we tried to just, as soon as I say everyone should be paid differently, and we chose to pay everybody the same at, at our level, but that's the choice we created, so.
I think the major increase there was postage and office supplies.
So this deputy court reporter, you're also asking twenty?
Correct.
And what's the total workforce, the fully staffed, as far as chief deputies?
There'd be seven employees. So two bailiffs, three, four deputy court reporters and the chief court reporter. It's probably six, seven.
So when I was saying court administrator, that titles.
Or chief court reporter slash.
Sorry.
Because she's handling all of the administrative stuff.
Can you say that again?
Chief court reporter, court administrator.
Yeah, how many you have?
Seven. And it helps the chief court reporter slash court administrators presently, Karen Allen. The.
We know who's the other.
Okay, I was just saying it would help to, it would help to identify the seven people just because it's on staff. I understand. So we have the chief court reporter, court administrator, and we have, is everybody else deputies?
Yes.
All the other court reporters deputies, so and then two bailiffs. So the bailiffs, when they are hired on, they're kind of informed that they make less than the court reporters, that their job responsibilities are actually different than the court reporters and in ways more than the court reporters. But it's separate in that they handle jury trials in some ways court reporters don't do with the plan that then the bailiffs can transition, you know, financial promotion of sorts to court reporters if they choose to. And so they get cross-trained.
So you have four deputy court reporters?
Yes, yeah. With the intention that they can.
Is that three, six, three, or four?
Four. The chief court reporter slash court administrator is one person. Two court reporters, so now we're up to three total people. Everybody's, no, I'm just, that, no, you're exactly right. That's why, this is just.
Okay, we'll figure it out later. It's in here.
Feudal exercise.
You, definitely you, the A L is what I mean. No, I didn't.
Anything else? Anybody see Circuit Court any questions?
Circuit Court, Joint Courts.
Oh, Joint Courts, sorry.
Furniture fixtures, we can upgrade. One hundred and two, fifty-four thousand.
I'm sorry.
I'm confused too.
Joint Courts, furniture and fixtures, one hundred and two, fifty-four thousand.
I think you're on the wrong one.
I think that's under the Superior.
Should be on page twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two. So the major request for, I don't see four thousand. This is page twenty-two.
Are we switching, are we going to Superior Court now?
Superior, yeah.
So page twenty-one. Pictures and furniture. So we need to repair a jury box that a defendant kicked out. The reality is we probably cannot do a jury trial in that room anytime in the near future. The seats that are there, even pre-COVID, are like a spirit flight. You're sitting in each other's lap, so not comfortable to begin with to sit there all day. But now add on the restrictions for spacing and it's impossible to put seven people in that, in that spot with any breathing room in between them. So add. And the carpet, we've waited to tear it out because we want to see what it looks like underneath there before we just rip it out. And then we've got a hole in the carpet. And we want to make sure we've got money to work with to resolve that. If it's just take it out completely and then he and I manage jury trials in the Circuit courtroom, we may have to do that because there's just no other physical space in the building to, to do it at this point in time. So we may just have to work around that level of it, which we think is completely doable at this point. But, so that's the reason, one of the reasons for the request. The other one is the chairs, some of them need replaced, one broke the other day. And so we just, there's just some, some furniture stuff that needs upgrading. With the additional employee, one that we made from part-time to full-time, we need a desk for them, a workspace. And so part of that's going to come out of that request too.
Was that anything you turned into the insurance company?
That wasn't in my judge's handbook. I have no idea. I don't know. I couldn't.
We didn't have information on, to do it either, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't know what the proper.
Custodian or anything.
I know the glass door was broken and was replaced almost immediately by Keith, who does a wonderful job. And, you know, there's just, there are a lot of things we've got to look at.
I'll ask you.
My memory, like most things, is that when the Superior Court recently was renovated prior to COVID, unfortunately, it was a stark improvement from what was there. And I think a local community member helped build it, if my memory is accurate. So as far as insurance valuations, that seemed like it would be difficult, a difficult process in and of itself just as far as getting a estimate or whatever. But I, if the custodian did not do that for the county, I don't think either judge navigated insurance claims for the, the, I know I did not.
I did not. I'm sorry.
I'll just, I, it just came to mind.
Good question. We can find out. I don't know. Any other questions about Superior Court? Okay. Joint Court, or let's do, I'm sorry, supplemental adult probation. This, you'll see the major change here, home detention will be moving to community corrections. So it eliminates that line item from this account and should move over there. The way that we're sentencing that supervision, home detention is an executed sentence, meaning it's jail alternative. And the way we've decided to move forward on the major, you know, ninety-eight percent of these cases is that an executed sentence will be handled through community corrections or the jail. So it's probation, then community corrections, whatever form of sanction or supervision we have there, and then to the jail or to the department corrections. So home detention needs to go over there because they're the majority of people putting people on home detention anyway. So any questions about that?
Just, just to have all the information out there, this specific aspect of the budget has historically been funded through user fees, et cetera, and with, with limited input or limited contribution from the county. And we'll obviously try to do that as long as possible, but I would not be surprised at some point in the next five, ten, or twenty years if someone at the state level tells us that we can't be the last county to do that anymore. And so using presently some of the community corrections funds, which are dispersed through DOC, non-county fund monies, that'll be a cost reduction to the county short term. But like most short-term benefits, there may be a long-term consequence where this county may have to fund the office's staff positions where it's not historically had to fully, but we'll just continue communicating with you each year. I think Justin has brought that to your attention for the past three or four years as far as there being a specific amount of money somewhere that's kind of been declinishing over the years, but I'll let him. Declinishing, I don't even think it's a word. I'll let him speak to that though.
What did you say that home detention is going?
Community corrections.
There'll be vestiges of it in probation because for legal reasons, I'm not going to explain to you. It has to remain an option because legal reasons.
But even then, you're talking probably.
Well, it's not our budget.
Sex offenders can't be put on, sex offenders can't be put on human home detention through community corrections. But if there's a bizarre set of circumstances where someone might have been a sex offender at some point and need a consequence that's not jail or DOC, I like to have that option and I don't like people to tell me I can't do it. And so I can do it if I do it through probation. I can't do it if I do it through community corrections. And so I will leave that open, but if not, I, I don't know if it's happened once in nine years, maybe once, if nobody likes it when it happens, but.
So I guess what I'm asking is you do not have any money.
Correct.
For probation.
Correct.
It'll still be, the way it'll be.
Right.
The way we word the order at that point will be, it'll be a term of probation that they're on community correction, home detention. So it'll still be, so we're shifting.
So we still don't leave money in there is what we're changing.
Correct.
I was just trying to pre-ack.
We may have to leave it there.
Let's say, but you want to leave that line item?
I do.
Yeah, it'll always be there.
Yeah.
No matter what.
Yeah, even if it's just a penny. I would like it to be there as an option for the judges to have whatever sentencing alternatives they have available statutorily in case law at our disposal.
It doesn't have, have any money to have. It'll always be that once it's created, it's always there.
Sounds good. Mr. Plou, where are you in the world? Is this France your background or, I can't see it. Oh, he's on mute, sorry.
He's muted. Just on mute.
So juvenile probation's there?
Thank you. Juvenile probation. The only change there from last year is the office equipment. And again, that's update for furniture, chairs, et cetera. It's been a long time since they had new equipment to sit on, so it's, it's, it's time. Everything else remains the same as last year.
Can we go back to the supplemental adult probation?
Sure.
Page fifty-six.
Supplemental. I don't see, I don't have a page.
Yeah.
Why not mark that?
I was, I was referencing from the council. The one we were just at.
Gotcha, okay.
So two questions. Are you, are you going to check on this twenty-five hundred dollar request for computer software and equipment? Or is that something that we can specify right now?
The, I believe that's going to be absorbed by, they're switching software providers. And will that cost come out of here with the SRS? Is that for that twenty-five hundred that's added in there?
There shouldn't be cost added.
Okay, I'll have to follow up with you on that. Turn one, sorry.
I know from past experience with some of the operating systems that we have to interface with, either from the court's perspective or probation's perspective, there are options. And we've always leveraged the state, the opportunity to use the free version, which wasn't available, but we talked them into it instead of paying for it. And so we always try to use the system that will work for us at the lowest costs, you know, provide that it does the tasks that we need. And I don't know specifically if that's the case here, but there are, you know, we use Odyssey through the courts. The probation departments use Odyssey, but they also have Insight, a couple of other things that I'm not familiar with.
And they're switching software users to SRS.
It'll be case management.
That's our case management.
So it'll be a case management software. And maybe, this is maybe, I wish I had a concrete answer for you, but we might not have had an answer when we proposed the budget. So we put in some funds in case it costs money and we might have received that answer since then. But to answer your question, we can follow up with you about that. I don't think we have a specific answer for you today on that.
Okay. And then just the next line item, the telephone and internet cost. So we've budgeted twelve hundred dollars in years past. Looks like we've used six hundred of that twelve hundred for this year. Looks like we've taken some resources out of this budget and doubled the telephone and internet request.
The, I know, I know for sure that there have been acquisitions of phones, which prior to COVID, we did not have cell phones for staff. But with COVID, Judge Hawkins spearheaded some efforts to provide some cellphone use and some other use to allow employees to work from home. And so I'll let him speak as far as that. I know there's some recurring monthly bills as far as those cellphone costs. And I know they've been handled, but that's my lack, that's my extent of my.
So the expense to rework the network, the phone network, was far greater than adding additional phone service to allow employees to work from home. Those costs have been eliminated at this point because they're back to work. The costs that are in there now are those costs necessary in the event that that has to happen again. It's more predicted.
Predicted.
Predict, yeah, thank you.
So it's there. Someone told me a terrible rumor that the schools may be shutting down soon, which scared me more than anything. But I, I don't keep my finger on the pulse of the COVID health and safety protocols presently. But if everything shuts down again, then we'll have to continue to find a way to work and it may involve that.
And part of it is the internet. There's a lot of people where we live, internet's either not available or not enough to allow connection in this.